Is that all the time? Is that what you have time?
Yeah, she had a big stack of her drinks.
Called to order of the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting Monday, December 21st, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Let us please stand and do the pledge, and as we stand, let's have a moment of our second reflection, past, future, past, present, and future. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, because we have the real call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
Present.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Going down the agenda, the appointments, we're going to remove the very first one to later date, and now we'll talk about the Township Assistance Hearing Officer, Mr. Rick Spangler. James, would you like to fill us in on this?
We've checked, and on the assistance hearing, we're allowed to appoint somebody to replace one of the commissioners to oversee this board, and a lot of our time's pretty well consumed with other meetings, and plus with our other jobs, that I thought it would be good if we could appoint Rick Spangler to the position, our HR Director. He's here about every day, and I believe he'd do a good job on that. So I'd make a motion that we appoint Rick Spangler as the overseer of the Township Assistant Hearings.
Second.
And that's the question, just for the next year, year to year, or see how you follow?
We can do it year to year, that's mine with me.
And he's agreed to do it, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Question, roll call please.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes. Thank you, Rick. Okay, approval of the minutes of the December 7th, 2015.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes. Okay, today we have Mrs. Helm from the Work One to fill us in on the Golden Ticket.
Good morning. Thank you for the invite to come in today. Commissioner Reagan had asked me to come in and talk about the Golden Ticket program that the Work One is offering currently. We started this program back in June. We've had 55 people start the program, 22 graduate. We have four that are on the job ready that we're looking to do contracts with, with current employers in the Delaware County area. We've had four that received employment prior, or after completion of the program, and then 22, I'm sorry, 14 that completed occupational skills training.
So you're pleased so far with?
We are. We've had employers say that they were willing to interview people that, once they've completed this, doesn't guarantee them a job, but it gives them the opportunity to interview with employers.
And the Golden Ticket is just a little bit more consultative, right?
Right, it's a five module component that they complete, so they do Thursday, Friday, one week, Thursday, Friday the next, and then a Thursday.
Well, thank you for coming in and filling us in, and much success with that.
Thank you.
And write a book out there.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Regan. I know you agreed to give me some time today to go through PowerPoint presentation. We've worked really hard the past six months since I contracted with Best of Consulting to do economic development work in the county. And I'm proud today to have some good positive projects for the county that we're moving forward with. There are job retaining projects, there are new job creation projects, and there are projects that are adding capital investment in both machinery and buildings in the county. So anyways, I'll get started, and we had to do a conversion from my computer to Jim Fluke's, and a few of the PowerPoint slides are out of order, so you're going to see some ugly faces right in the middle of the presentations. Anyways, Delaware County Economic Development and Delaware County Development Commission are two entities that we are in charge of and currently operate on your behalf. Our scope of work with the economic development, we've called on over 154 companies in Delaware County since June 1st. I can tell you that the companies that we've called on were thrilled that we've called on them. Many of them have not been called on in over 20 years. When we talked to those companies and explained to them that we're calling them on behalf of the county, wanted to see how operations are going, how things are working, they were all ecstatic that we were calling. Actually, a couple of them were even a little leery why we were calling, because they hadn't been called in so long. We've completed or are working on 22 total projects from that 154 calls that we've made in Delaware County. I'm not going to go through all those, we'll want to see a big chunk of those here in just a second. Our focus, as we had talked early on, was on small towns and local companies. There's been a lot of past emphasis on attracting companies from out of town into Delaware County that sometimes didn't always perform and live up to our expectations. So we chose to invest or put our time with those that have already committed to Delaware County and are already here and call Delaware County home. One of our first projects, right out of the gate, we approved a tax abatement on day one with you, was for Midwest Metal. We've actually done two tax abatements with them. First was 60,000 square feet, added a $2,168,000 addition to their facility, added $301,000 in new equipment at that facility. Second one, this is my personal favorite, Merritt Tool. We just cold-called Merritt Tool in Eaton, Indiana. No one had called them before, went up at a meeting with Merritt Tool. Merritt told us, hey, we would expand right now if we had the room to do that. We looked next door, there was the vacant Eaton Community Center, and I said to Phil Reber at Merritt Tool, I said, if we can get you that community center, what could you do? He said, well, I would move my shipping and receiving operations into that community center. And he said, I'd add new machinery at $156,000, creating three new jobs at 18 bucks an hour. So anyways, we got that done. Took some time, worked with the Eaton Town Board, they were ecstatic. They publicly thanked me and you in the meeting, that they had not had anyone from the county reach out to them in Eaton in years, and they were very happy for the assistance. The building is now back on the tax rolls. Merritt Tool agreed to remodel the building, and then, of course, we talked about the new jobs and the machinery. Here's the ugly bugs that are out of order here, and this is supposed to be right at the front. I did manage to find my high school graduation picture. Anyways, you see me there on the left, and Bill Walters is Senior Project Manager. Bruce Baldwin does our R&amp;E calls, that's retention and expansion calls. He is really busy working on those. Bruce has been a great addition, very helpful for us because he knows all of these people in the county. Tony Boebain, yeah? Recent Allstate graduate. Tony is available for research analysis, whatever he desires. So that's our team. Another project, we do have a signed purchase agreement from Delaware Glass now for the former Tucson Tool Building and TFX Springman Building in Muncie, so we're happy to get that sold. Delaware Glass has agreed to invest $450,000 in the building to remodel and upgrade it. They've also agreed to create 20 new jobs, and these are good jobs, too. These are union wage, glass glazer jobs that pay upwards of $20 an hour, so those are good jobs. They're also retaining their current workforce here of about 30, and they are assuming that D.D. Dan are leased at the building also, which is a good thing for the county. Shannon, this one's for you, buddy. I put the "I love Albany" mug on there. This is Arnold's Professional Lawn Care. It's really hard to find a picture on Google of the town of Albany, but I did happen to find this mug. So anyways, Arnold's Professional Landscaping and Lawn Care, we're working with them now to acquire a former Blighed acreage behind the McCormick's Building. We've issued an RFP, I presented this in this meeting here before. You've agreed to give the property to the ECI Regional Planning District. ECI Regional Planning District has accepted Arnold's Lawn Care's proposal to invest $250,000 in new operations. That's a new mulch refining operation, as well as mini warehouses, and create two part-time jobs. This property was not on the, was in the tax sale for six years, so this is a good thing to get this property back on the tax rolls, and a good thing for Albany. Sinflux Paper, to Sinflux's credit, they were really up and running with this when we visited with them, but they have leased 100,000 square feet on Butterfield Road. They've invested $500,000 in new equipment and created four new jobs, and they're retaining their other workforce. With this project, I mean, that's a pretty big win, getting somebody to lease 100,000 square feet, invest a half a million dollars. All we had to do from the county side was to assist them with getting a meter on their suite going out, so no investment from the county, but a good project. Auto Farm, McCropland Ford, we're still working with McCropland Ford to locate next to Sam Pierce Chevrolet on State Route 67 in Daleville. Auto Farm's planning to invest over $4 million in new building and creating up to 70 new jobs, so good project for Daleville, we're happy about that. Real America Living, I'm sorry that the picture of the building there on the right's so dark, I'm not sure why that's coming through like that, but this project is contingent upon the pending tax credit application that we have assisted them with. We also assisted Real America in optioning two pieces of property in Daleville. They're planning to invest 8.4 million in a new housing complex. They also plan to build a new community center, and also have a medical, urgent care medical pavilion with that as well, which is very much needed in Daleville. Four new jobs created total on that project. Artisan Tool &amp; Die, this is a familiar site on State Route 28. We worked with Chuck Benatter on $101,000, new piece of machinery at his facility. He's creating one new job, but he's retaining 28 that he has there currently, so we're happy to help Chuck Benatter at Artisan Tool. This is downtown Yorktown. Pete Olson, Town Manager at downtown Yorktown, or for Yorktown, called me, and I had a gentleman who was interested in building a new commercial residential building in downtown Yorktown. You can see the building is the one on the far left of the picture there, he'll have a little pointer to point out it, but we assisted David in procuring $2,500 from the Yorktown TIF District to help him draw the building. Now he's, we're assisting him in costing that building out, finding out what the gap is between rent rates and cost of construction, and we'll help try to incentivize him some way there. This is the first kind of project in downtown Yorktown for their new master plan that they're trying to enact and put in place. Also, this will be the first new building built in downtown Yorktown on the main dragon since the 1970s, so this is a neat project. Park One Railspur, I know Commissioner Regan, you were really excited to have us work with Good Industries on the rail spur. That was something that was dear to you. We've had good success with Good. We've visited with several companies in the county to see if they were interested in shipping by rail. We do have three companies in county who have shown interest in the rail. I do have one out-of-county company that we've talked to who's interested in shipping by rail. Just from those meetings, Good Industries is excited and has proposed in an email to me to invest a half a million dollars in land acquisition, a new train platform to load the train cars, trucks, trailers, and the switch engine. So I'll be talking with you more after the first of the year, how we can assist them in making that investment. Town of Gaston, Indiana. Their Town Board is turning over at this time, and again, I had trouble finding a picture of Gaston's, but I did find the Cardinal Greenway Gaston Trailhead picture, so that's up there. We assisted the town in conducting a townwide visioning session in cooperation with the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We called the state of Indiana and asked them to come in and assist us with a town visioning session. 37 people from the town showed up at that visioning session, and they told us the good, bad, and ugly about Gaston. And after the presentation was done, we had them vote on the things that they would like to see changed first. And so the state is putting those items into a booklet, they're going to present that to the Gaston Town Board at a January meeting. I've also asked the Gaston, the new members of the Gaston Town Board to come up and meet with you today immediately after this meeting, so looking forward to that. Bridgestone Bandag, doing business as Ken Don on Point Avenue in Muncie. We just received a tax abatement application from them last week. They're planning to purchase $646,968 in new machinery, retaining 38 employees. These are good jobs. This will be on the county council's agenda in January, and we're excited about that. Let me clarify, too, when we do tax abatements with these companies, they're eligible for 100% up to 10 years. We don't set our tax abatements up that way. We like to talk to them about five-year abatements phased in, starting out at 100% the first year, and then going down to 80, 60, 40, 20 on their percentages. That way, the county has some revenue coming in at the same time that we're abating taxes to the company. And the way we present those tax abatements is as revenue positive tax abatements to the county council, which I think they appreciate. Bikeline Projects, we're currently working with an auto parts supplier considering building a 50,000 square foot headquarters and distribution center. We have two local companies considering acquiring existing manufacturing operations that are located out of the county and bringing them here. Both of them are good, solid companies. Capital investment between those three projects is approximately 2.2 million. Total jobs between the projects is approximately 47. Shell Buildings, we're continuing to work to market those. We have two companies looking at the Daleville Shell Building, one company looking at the Industrial Center Shell Building currently, and negotiations and assending packages are currently underway to assist those companies. No promises on this one, these are tough sales. As you know, some shell buildings have been around for as long as five years, but that in actuality is a good thing. We could fill these tomorrow with somebody who just wanted to store semi-truck trailers there, but that's not our intention. Our intention is to get somebody in there who's going to be a job creator, and we're best to hold out for that. The Sally Mae Building in the Air Park Industrial Center is the best example of that. Could have filled it five times, but waited on that end user who was going to put a lot of jobs in there. Cleanup work for 2015, this is stuff nobody likes to talk about, but it's necessary evil when it comes to economic development. We negotiated with Brevini on the payback, $375,000 for their clawback. That work is complete. We negotiated with Jarden Home Brands on their payback, $84,000 payback, that's their full amount due. That was just completed last month at the County Redevelopment Commission meeting. We also evicted Kermit from the former Tucson Tool Building. That was a big story when they missed three months' worth of rent payment. That is done. Bell Aquaculture Bond Redemption, that is also completed as well. $800,000 was paid back to that bond. There's still a small $300,000 bond that's outstanding for the property when we acquired the land and the construction dollars. Those are four things that are under wraps and complete and work done. Talk about the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission here for a minute. There were three major bond issued, bonds issued in 2015. First one is a Morrison Road sidewalk project. This project is currently in the design phase. This ties in the sidewalks, and she's been very instrumental in helping us with this project. This ties the sidewalks on Morrison Road, clear up the Bethel Avenue, down Bethel Avenue, clear to Clara Lane, and then also a new sidewalk in front of Walmart and Lowe's. This is just Phase 1 of the project. This connects that whole area from Con Cannons to the Hampton Inn to Mancino's, et cetera. Lot of walking traffic in that area with the, probably apartments that are out there. $6 million project total. Phase 1 will probably be about $2 million of that $6 million project. Downtown Daleville, or I'm sorry, Daleville Town Hall Park. This is a neat project in Daleville. This is a new park that's going right next door to the Town Hall. It'll have a huge splash pad. This comes out of the Daleville Master Plan that the residents of the town of Daleville had a meeting, boy, it's been almost three years ago now, and number one project was, or number one issue was that there were no amenities in Daleville. We needed to create some amenities, so this is the new park, and we're excited to see it happen. Construction drawings are complete, currently bidding the project now. It's a $4.2 million project total. It'll have a fantastic splash pad when it's all completed for kids to play at. Roads in the Industrial Center, this has been a problem for years and years and years. Roads are terrible. We did issue a $2.3 million bond for complete reconstruction of roads in the Industrial Center. This includes Mount Pleasant Boulevard, Delaware Drive, and Hamilton Drive. Construction drawings are complete. We awarded the bid to E&amp;B Paving last month, and we'll see construction activity on those roads in 2016. Additional paving projects, we also worked with County Redevelopment Commission to pave 600 West from State Route 28 to Cardinal Greenway. That's Harrison Township. Now, part of the Morrison Road TIF District is in Harrison Township, and so this was a project that was important to the school corporation, to Westell School, and so we got part of the road paved there. We also paved Benton Road from Jackson Street to Keller Drive, and Petty Road from Benton Road to the First Curve South. Both of these roads had a lot of traffic on them when the Morrison Road project was actually completed. Downtown Daleville, Blighed Building demolitions. We've, six parcels acquired so far, three parcels optioned, four buildings demolished, two demos in process. You can see the buildings there on the left, before and after picture. We even managed to get the clouds out of the sky in that second picture, so it looks really good. I don't know if you can see it, but the lower right-hand corner of the after picture is the former Daleville Furniture Store, and that store is slated to come down January 4th. They're going to start taking that building down, so we're excited about that, too. Anyways, that's my presentation. We've worked hard this year for you. I think there's some good projects here. I thank you for the opportunity to work on these. We look forward to 2016, and happy to answer your questions.
You passed in visiting.
Been visiting, so thank you to Jim Fluke for getting this set up for us today, so.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. Here's one, here's summary of this. Total new jobs, 114. Retained jobs, 141. Total investment, $15,344,000. Investment in new equipment, $2,353,900. So that's where we're at. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. I just want to say that I've been a Commissioner since ending my third year. Brad, this is the first time we've ever had an economic development group come up here and explain to us the investments and everything. Before we hired you, we had a discussion about working with the companies that we've actually got here in our community to invest in them, to keep them going, because you are right, we've had in the past, under some other Commissioners and stuff, to where they went out and brought in some of what I would call some fly-by-night companies that we see right now that really didn't make it. It's great that we invest back in our community. Like you said, I mean, each company might give one job here, two jobs there, but over the year, if you set and add it up, there's our 114 jobs for the year. So thank you, Brad, Bill, and everybody else that works for you guys for keep working with the businesses we have in our community.
We'll keep it up.
Thank you. Okay, is Jim here? There, Jim. Update on our web.
Good morning, Jim Fluke, IT.
Good morning.
Did you get a copy of this responsive design in your folder?
I don't think I did.
I'll get you some. Okay. Basically, I'm here to ask the Commissioners to consider redesign of our county webpage. Since starting in 2007 with the present webpage we have, it's went through a couple of changes, minor. The new design that EcoStrategy, that's the people that host our webpage, has offered us now, is a opportunity to redesign the page so now it'll fit on a multitude of devices that you were looking at the webpage with, so whether it's a computer, it's an iPad, your phone, or your regular desktop computer, it's going to size the screens accordingly so you don't have to flip back and forth and try to read what the page says, and sometimes that, you lose some of the continuity of what it's saying and trying to see everything, especially on some of your smaller devices. The IT committee and the webpage committee that we have have sat down in the last couple of months and have went through the departments, talked to them, asked them if there's things that they would like to see changed on their webpage. We've asked them if there's anybody that's in their department that's interested in keeping our webpage up to date, that's not doing it now, that we want to entice them to do that, because that keeps the information on their office more up to date and gives us a little more leeway as far as what we can put on the page, and try not to over-clutter the page with a number of things. Then the committee would work with all these people and trying to get stuff on if they have problems, but it's a ongoing situation on the page to try to keep it up. Part of what we're trying to do is mainly is to give it a new fresh look, get some new pictures on there. If we decide that we can go on with this, we're going to ask the county residents, the county people here, to submit pictures to us so we can put on the webpage. As I said, it's, most of these have been put on back in 2007, so a lot of things have changed in the county since then, and to promote the county, similar to what Brad's been doing with your economic development, that also helps when people go to the webpage to look at it. So you kind of want to keep it up to date as much as you can and keep it fresh. And we've had a number of compliments about our webpage over the years, so it's easy to read, easy to follow, but then as time goes on, technology changes, and there's different ways you can present the page and make it easier for people, so that's kind of what we're looking at, trying to do and accomplish with this. The project for them to do this is $7,250. To get the project started, they would need $2,175. And to do that, then we would take the project from each department's aspect, find out what they want to change, and work with each department to get what they want on the page, and to get as much information about the county available, and make it more user-friendly when they go to the page to jump around and find minutes, documents, resolutions, whatever that they're looking for, makes it easier. And a lot of the web committee people had a lot of suggestions, things that they've heard back from people that they would think would make it a lot easier to use the page, so that's.
What kind of deadline are we looking at for the picture? Like if someone had something at home they'd like to send?
Well, I mean, I guess the first step is to see whether we're going to be able to proceed with the project. If we do, then I would probably, you know, give them 30 to 45 days if they've got pictures to get, and then by the time we get the project up and rolling, because there's a lot of front-end things that we would have to do with the departments to get information gathered and get their pages redesigned before the pictures can go into the design part.
So if we get a motion today, I can't believe we couldn't find some money in the Edit Fund.
We found the project.
You had your own. What project's that number?
Right, 38, I'm thinking, I'm not sure, but for sure, but.
The 38 or 48?
Yeah, yeah, one of those. But it is for.
Simmons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's an IT project.
Number nine?
Yeah, I think it's 38.
So.
So the money is there in that project, if you want it.
Should we entertain a motion then to move on?
I think it's important we do it. I'll make a motion, and we go ahead and move forward with the webpage update.
I'll second it.
Do you want to put it coming out of the, at an IT fund?
Yes, yes.
Project 38.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
It's 48.
48. 48.
Yeah, project 48.
Thank you. And if, you know, if anybody has got pictures, anything you want to add to the webpage, you guys want to add to it, make sure you get with us, and we'll make sure we get all of it in there on the redesign, so we can make our webpage.
And do you want any suggestions just to come straight to you, your email?
Sure, that's fine, yeah.
The public.
Or to the webmaster, at co.bellaware.in.us. That'll come to me also.
Okay, very good.
Okay?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Scott's been helping Jim quite a bit with this, and we appreciate Scott's help. Okay, attorney, Mr. Murphy? Okay, attorney, Mr. Murphy's got a temporary highway easement.
We've been working with Angie with respect to Bridge 159. We need to acquire a small parcel of property that people didn't want to give it up, so we had to file a condemnation action, but we did manage to resolve that with them before expending money on appraisals. And so, we've reached a very reasonable settlement. They've already been paid. They have signed the easement and the deed, and we just need for the commissioners to approve taking that property so that the construction can begin whenever Angie's ready.
Next, please.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion, roll call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Mr. Ergen?
Yes.
Angie, what's the timeline again? It's going to be late this winter or...
I want to advertise for bids, open bids by the end of February is the goal. We have to do some tree clearing by April 1st due to the back restrictions. We're currently working with AT&amp;T to get their schedule because they do need to move fiber optic out of our way. More likely it's going to hit this summer, so...
And it's going to be about a nine-month project?
No, I wouldn't say that long. I think they can get the road open in 150 to 180 days.
Oh, really?
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. Okay, well, thank you. I know, and that's the bridge just north of the dam with the reservoir.
Right, on Windsor Road.
Windsor Road. And it's mostly needed, that's for sure. Okay, and thank you very much, Steve, for all that. Okay, now, we have a contract for the DCC with Mr. Mitchell here, Castle.
Morning. Mitch Castle, I'm the Director of Community Corrections. Seems like I'm over here a lot with these contracts. Sorry about that. But we've had...
Mitch, can you talk louder, please?
Sure. We've had some changes and some renegotiations and some fees that were changed, and also, these contracts represent our latest agreement, which allows us to have five free units. I've got two separate contracts, and there's two copies of each. The other thing that I wanted to let you know is I have a signature from their representative today so that we don't play the game of having to send them back for them to sign. And I know that your job is to ratify these contracts, so my signature's on it and their executive signature is there too. So, once you finalize it, it was finalized agreement. And that's basically all I have.
And then just some simple errors that we didn't get?
Some errors, but...
And they did lower the price a little bit.
They dropped the price from $4.85 to $3.85 on the executive tract ones, and also allows to have the five free units. So, it helps us with our inventory, and it's tough to keep enough units around and keep up with the releases from the jails, so we're trying to watch our inventory a little closer.
I'll second.
Then, roll call. Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Ergen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitch.
Ms. Mortar now has the General Service Agreement between Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Triad.
Yes, this is, this contract is for renewal for general engineering services. The only thing that has changed, well, there's two minor items. One of the positions, the rates went up by $10. That's for clerical. And the reimbursable mileage has been reduced to 40 cents based off the state code, which are the only two changes. And it's for not to exceed $7,500, and we only use it as needed.
And it's mostly just for just anything? Bridge?
Drainage. If we need, you know, something comes up, we need the bridge looked at, or a road needs some expertise, I can give them a call.
I'll make a motion to approve contract between Triad and the county. Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Mr. Ergen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then, we have the HWSC Engineering for...
This is, this same type of contract as Triad is for renewal as well. The, a few of the position rates have increased, not all of them. The amount is not to exceed by $10,000. Based off of the average of the past four years of what we have spent, I felt comfortable reducing that amount to 10,000. It originally was 15,000. And again, this is as needed.
I believe this is the company that's been helping us out, Industrial Park?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve contract with HWSC. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Ergen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Does the Triad, does that go with this contract?
Two different firms. They're two different firms.
So, we don't have to approve the other one?
They approved it.
Approved it. We've approved those up.
They did this Triad, just a kind of...
Yeah. And if they just do the...
Okay, thanks. Okay, going down to the department heads, elected officials, anybody wish to speak today? If not, we'll go down to Ways Majors. Jess turned in his report.
You have to speak.
Jess turned in his report for his November, December. Appreciate that. Payments of claims of $3,875,886.48.
Make a motion, payment of claims. Second.
Roll call. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Mr. Ergen?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for the public. Any questions or comments? Anybody sitting out in the audience?
Well, I got you to that all three together. I've talked to Mark from Amaresco, Scott Alexander, County Council. Talked to Mark from Amaresco, and as they're finishing up that project here, we probably want to let the department heads know that if there are any things that they're not satisfied with, we need to address those. I've also asked for him to schedule a walkthrough with you guys and council and whoever else wants to be involved with that so that they can go through all of the things that they were supposed to do and what has been done and show us those things. And if you guys have any questions, I believe he said he's going to be out of town. Mark himself is going to be out of town. You can probably get those answered from Amaresco. He's wanting to schedule that sometime, I believe fairly early in January that we do that walkthrough. So, I know there were a few things that needed to be addressed that I've talked to them about, and I think they are going to address them. They kind of claim they may not have been in the contract, but they are going to go ahead and address those items for us, so...
Yes, we appreciate them. That was one of the first on the item, the one issue down at the auditor's office, so we were kind of disappointed they didn't fix it promptly while we were here.
Well, that's the, I expressed that same flavor, I guess, with them, that they, you know, they initially, when they did their survey of what was here, I mean, those things were there, and we, you know, I think that was one of the things, the equalization of heat in this building that was a concern that we wanted to make sure got taken care of, so...
Well, I think when they got in there, they found it worse than they thought, and it's still got to be addressed, so I appreciate them picking up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they done?
No, they're coming back to work on your...
I was going to say, this is my third redo the building.
I know.
It's as bad as the first one's.
And I know Donna, and I'm very disappointed, but things happen, and it was just something they just kind of came upon when they started taking the pipes apart.
It was a lot worse.
When you do a bid, maybe you don't go as much detail as you should, but since it was...
So, they're going to come back.
So, they are going to come back.
They'll come back. I've been talking to Mark, he's also going to send me some information on the coils and everything being clogged up.
I don't know where it runs and bad, but it's...
They're the worst one, they're building.
The coils that will run the heat and the water and everything through, they're stopped up. I guess they've been stopped up for years.
Well, they were steamed. They were put in with steam.
And they haven't been cleaned or maintained. He's going to get me some information on, I've asked what it would cost to have it fixed, but we are going to work on it. We're going to get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we're kind of in negotiations, but we think that they're going to follow through as planned with no additional cost to the public. Okay, as we close out the 2015 year, would my fellow commissioners like to make any statements as we have our last meeting for the year?
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
Very Merry Christmas.
Very Merry Christmas.
I'd just like to say, it's been great working with you, and Shannon, it's been great for the first year.
The rookie is over.
Everything's worked out pretty good up here. I've really enjoyed the way we've worked, how we've kept politics out of office up here. We've done the right thing for the community. I just want to say thank you to both of you for your hard work.
James?
It's been a joy.
Yeah. It's probably been a treat your first four years.
Well, I'd like to compliment, I believe, from my standpoint, and I know others too, this year we've done a few different things to get the morale back up for the county employees, and we want to, most of us appreciate it. One thing was we had a Thanksgiving carry-in together, and everyone brought things. And then the second was, did we do, I think we had a contest the Fourth of July. Yeah. Oh, my gosh, that was funny. And then we did a Christmas sweater contest, but we kind of like, maybe next year we'll have, because some people dress as different things, and I mean, it was really hilarious. We had fun, and we had a little, like crackers and cheese and whatever brought into a room, and anybody could come up, and that was, I thought that was fun, and everyone else did. I think, you know, I would like to have, like, you know, more of the Sheriff Department and the other buildings to be more included, but of course, they're offsite, so that's pretty hard. But we can always try harder, but it's been fun getting, tasting other people's foods, and we've just had a good time. I mean, it's just been, and then Steve in our office, he's brought a lot of festivities and a lot of fun in our, so like, I feel like the morale is totally different. I think that's just another pick-me-up that you have, so we all say thank you for that.
And Mr. Pangler?
Oh, yeah.
Putting that on for us.
Yes, yes.
It's been great.
I'm sorry that I didn't...
You've been a heck of a HR director for us. I mean, you've done a great job, so thanks, Rick.
I didn't mean to split you. You guys are the ones that did the work. I mean, I think you guys did. It's true.
It's been good working with Rick.
Yeah, yeah, it's fun, and the commissioners gave prizes and stuff, so I mean, it was just something fun to do.
Well, when you do name names, you are bound to forget someone sometimes, but how could you forget Halloween?
Oh, my God, yeah, that was fun, too. Yeah, that was fun, too. And then we'd be like, Kyle Johnson, he started a website for the county, so we've been like posting things, and we get a lot of compliments and comments from that, so...
Facebook page. He started a Facebook page.
What'd I say?
Website.
Oh. Yeah, Facebook. Well...
It's been a good year.
Yeah, it has been a good year.
Yeah, it's been a different year for me than, than as further that, because I don't articulate quite as well as some people would like, and I will forgive anybody who thinks otherwise, but I'm trying to do my best. And with this, I do wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you.
Thank you. Thank you.